So we're going to go ahead and get started in a minute, just to honor everybody's time. Can somebody who is a co-host, can you go ahead and keep admitting people so that I don't have to worry about that? That would be fantastic. Thanks. Well, we want to welcome everybody to the Special Education and Section 504 Programming Town Hall Meeting with, in collaboration with Advocacy Denver and DPS. I know that we're all excited to be here tonight and to be sharing with you some of the information we have and to answer some of your questions, especially since there's been a little bit of time since everybody has come back from the break and there's been an opportunity to see how things are working. I thank everybody who had an opportunity to provide registration and give us some online content. And we are going to try to address some of the major themes as we go through the evening, as well as give you some information for families and try to answer some of your questions. Jessica from FACE is going to go through our norms in a little bit. But on tonight, we have, from Advocacy Denver, we have Pam, who's the Executive Director, and myself, I'm an educational advocate and pro bono attorney. Just for my purposes, just know that anything I say tonight, you shouldn't rely on as legal advice. You should consult an attorney if you want. And I think it's also important to point out that the primary focus of tonight's webinar is really around COVID-19 and the programming the DPS is doing related to that. So to the extent we're offering information regarding themes or we're trying to provide information to you regarding rollout of services, keep in mind, these are in response to the current situation. These are not general policies, but should just be taken for those purposes. I know that I'm very excited to be here tonight. I've had the, I have the honor of working at Advocacy Denver. And we are working regularly with a lot of families regarding special education services, 504 services. We've been involved in a number of contingency plan meetings. And we are excited to be here as a thought partner with DPS tonight to provide this information. You will see on the right side, there are a number of DPS individuals who are here. All of the senior managers are here. The family and community engagement is here. And I think what is really important about that is it speaks to how important this issue is from a community perspective, and the DPS takes this very seriously. They're here to answer your questions. They're here to be a resource for you. We are all working through this together. I know on the family side, I hear the struggles that each of you have. We are working daily and things are evolving on a daily basis, as you can imagine. And we're just happy to be here to both give you some information about specifics regarding services, but also to help you understand what you can be doing to take care of yourself in this time. I know that many of you probably have kids right now who are running around. You might be even be juggling work and things like that. And so our goal and our hope is really to be able to provide you sort of a 360-degree picture of where things stand right now. I'm going to turn it over to Family and Community Engagement, and they're going to go through our virtual norms with you.
Thank you. And so as Stephen said, I'm Jessica Davey. I'm the manager of the Family Constituency Team, which is a section of Family and Community Engagement with DPS. And just to go over some norms for our meeting. Sorry, I think I got muted there for a second. And so our first norm is we want to seek to understand through listening and questioning. And we will be utilizing the chat icon. Everyone will have the chat icon at the bottom of their screen. Any specific questions that you have during this time, in terms of something being presented, please type it in the chat. And we will be looking at that chat throughout this whole presentation. We do ask no side conversations while that chat is going on. You know, no separate conversations than just the questions being asked. So we really want to listen and question. We want to presume positive intent in everyone. As Stephen introduced, we are all here because this is an important issue. So just presuming that positivity throughout this presentation. Waiting for the next one. We want to start on time and end on time. So this is scheduled from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. We just want to respect everyone's time. I know that we are logging on later in the evening, and so we recognize that, we appreciate that, and we want to respect everyone's time. And lastly, no live questions. So as I said earlier, we will be utilizing that chat. Any questions in the chat, if we do not get to them all, and we might not, we will be collecting those questions and information and following up later on with more guidance. So please know that we will answer what we can throughout this. The chat will be utilized, but if we do not get to it, we will, at a later time, we will be collecting all of those questions.
All right. Hopefully you can all hear me again. So the agenda, there's four major areas that we are going to be addressing tonight. The first is really talking about the health and well-being of our community, and more specifically, what I think are the social emotional needs for each one of you. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, good. The second thing is that we are going to talk through the virtual learning environment, as well as what special education services look like in this virtual learning environment. And that's really going to lead us into a discussion about contingency planning, as well as really looking at some of the major themes that we got from the questions that we've already received. Again, there's likely to be some additional questions that are going to come out of the discussions through the chat rooms. We are going to try and answer all those questions the best that we can. One of the things that I think is important to remember is please try and use the chat room and recognize it as a public forum. So to the extent you have a specific question about your child, you probably don't want to bring that question to a chat room for purposes of FERPA and privacy and things like that. Additionally, given this environment, it's going to be difficult for us to answer a specific question about programming just for one child. But if it's a general question about programming for all individuals with disabilities and something that would be applicable to the general population of individuals with disabilities, we're going to do our best to answer those questions. And just if we, you have those specific questions, we're going to give you some resources at the end for your particular child on who you can contact. Advocacy Denver is a community partner. You can reach out to Family and Community Engagement, and you can reach out to your building leaders, and we'll remind you of that. And then last, we're going to have that listening session, both to take in your concerns, so just to hear and to understand what's going on in the community, and then to also try and find those themes so that we can provide some guidance to those specific questions that you might have that could be applicable to individuals with disabilities. So I'm going to turn it over to Jess to talk about some of the things that have been going very well for this transition to an online learning environment. And she and I are going to sort of co-lead this particular slide.
Yeah. Thanks, Stephen. Do you want to click for that first success? There we go. And so the first success we have is that DPS has distributed over 40,000 devices and over 500 hotspots to families in need so far. I recognize, and I think we all recognize, that this has been a very hectic time for everyone, especially with the extended spring break, getting all of those devices over to families. And so DPS has been getting those devices in and distributing them as we've been getting them in at different times and different locations. So so far, you know, that's been a huge success to get as many as we have already to families. And I will discuss some more information about technology at the end. And we, DPS has also distributed about 250,000 meals to families, which is a huge success. The information on the food distribution is located on the DPS website. So you can go to dpsk12.org and find on the side, there's an information tab for food distribution sites. And so you can find all of that information there. If anyone has any additional questions, you can always call the Family Community Helpline, which will have the number posted at the end as well. But you can always give us a call and we'll help out with the distribution sites and information. But a huge success to see that many meals delivered already.
So from Advocacy Denver and just from our relationship and hearing feedback from both DPS and then from our specific individuals, we are hearing that families are, they're pleased with the services that they're providing. Here's one individual that says, this has been an excellent experience for their son. We are finding that one of the major things that is really valuable about the planning and the services that are going in right now are that they are very open to having conversations and feedback and trying to tailor contingency plans and services to hear the individuals and their concerns. And we've been a proud community partner here at Advocacy Denver to be able to represent families of kids with disabilities and to be there and walk alongside those families with disabilities and be one of the people in the community that's at the forefront of doing that. And we've also been proud to be working with DPS to bring those concerns that family members have and to bring success for many family members who maybe initially were struggling, but are now that we've been involved and have been working in collaboration with DPS, are now in a position where they're understanding how to log on, they're understanding what services look like. Or if there are still some instances where there's some challenges, we're able to keep that communication open and find a solution that best meets each child's needs. Because again, it's not a one-size-fits-all. Some kids are navigating very well and the families are. And others, it's a very different scenario. And so we've been very honored to be able to represent families in the community to do that. And then finally, I think a success is the amount of outreach and collaboration that's going on. In a situation like this, it really does take a village. And those collaborations that have been going on with community partners, with individuals within DPS, I know there's a senior manager and probably several who are distributing Chromebooks and hotspots to families and trying to get those services out, as well as all of the members of our community who have been working to help deliver food or provide services. I think that that's a testament to how much everybody collectively cares about kids with special needs and in fact, all of the DPS community. So I just want to take a moment. I am sure there are moments where every individual is having some anxiety right now. I know that I personally always have anxiety in these times of just always making sure that we're addressing all the family's needs. And this is something that comes up again in the slides. And I think it's an important moment to take when we talk about issues and we talk about these concerns, to just pause breathing and connect, connect with yourself, to be able to connect with others. As Jess mentioned, you know, assuming positive intent, I'd be the first to tell you, at times I lose sight of that. But when I can come back and remember that we're all working to do what we can to make a difference, to ensure that everything's smooth, it's able to shift my perspective. Even taking three deep breaths for me is sometimes something that can really reframe and re-center me in terms of conversation and being able to look at these issues. Because I think everybody knows, it's not perfect. It's on the right track. Everybody is doing their best. And we're here tonight to just make sure that we can collectively figure out, both from the community perspective as an advocacy organization and DPS as district leaders, how to meet the needs for all of our kids with disabilities. So this is kind of the fun part for me. I like this metaphor of putting on your own mask first. And when I am involved in an advocacy case, I often find this is where I start. I often, for myself and for the individuals that I work with, it's important for me to make sure that I'm in the right space to be able to help, offer help to others who need help in this time. And for those of you with families, for those of you who might be on who are service providers, for all of us who are on who might be leaders in the district or community partners, I think it's always important to go back to this idea. And I want you to know that collectively, the people who put this together recognize how challenging it is for everybody. And so what I wanted to do is just maybe offer some insights that might be helpful as you work towards providing services to your own children, to be a teacher for your kids when you've never taught before, to be a service provider, or to be someone who's in the district. The first thing just goes back to what I mentioned before, which is taking that me time and being sure that you have self-care built in. It might only be able to be those three breaths. I was talking to someone today that for me, I found that in the Zoom world, I'm putting too many meetings back-to-back-to-back, and I don't give myself a breather. You might be bouncing between work, helping your kids, cooking dinner, doing the laundry, all of those things that go into it. And you're back-to-back-to-back, and finding those few minutes for yourself is difficult because of all those demands. And I personally found that if I don't do that for me, I can't be the best person for those people I'm working with and those people I'm trying to help. The second thing, and this is tough, is really making sure to ask for help. One of the best things that I can do, and it's so simple, but families find it's so helpful, is they come with all of these questions and concerns. And I, and the best thing I could often do is just bring them to the people who have information and say they need help. Today I was on a meeting and someone didn't understand the schedule. Someone didn't know how to log on, the passwords. And we were able to connect and just say, could someone spend 10 minutes and help this parent understand how to do it? And that switch was just what was needed to help that, that parent feel like they have more control and a sense of understanding about this situation. Because it's only been rolled out for a short period of time. So please feel comfortable asking for help. I know I ask for help all the time. I talk to other people. I look for resources. And I want everyone on this call to feel like they can do that, too. So the third thing is recognizing your feelings. There's probably good ways and bad ways to recognize your feelings. I know that sometimes I don't articulate them well. But it's important for you to know you're scared, you're fearful, you're tired, hungry, lonely, angry. Those sorts of things are, tell a lot. I can tell you as an individual who worked with kids with significant emotional and behavioral issues, this was actually probably the number one thing I would work on with my kids, which is identifying what you're feeling. You can be feeling overwhelmed. That's an absolutely valid feeling. And so it's important to recognize what you're feeling, because once you can do that, you can figure out how to navigate that space. And so it's important to recognize that everybody is going to get tired. Everybody is anxious. And to be okay with that. There's nothing wrong with those feelings right now. Prioritize. Some people, it's interesting, it's gone both ends of the spectrum. So I've had families who have said to me, there's not enough work for my kiddo. And then I've had families who were like, way too much work for my kiddo. They're overwhelmed and they're melting down. So no matter where you are, it's important to think about, how do I prioritize? What is the most important thing today? I think anybody who I've talked to who's been in a contingency plan meeting, who's been in my contact through district leaders, through community partners, through families, I don't think there's anybody that doesn't recognize it's important to pick your battles and decide what's the important thing for the day. If you're juggling four different things and you realistically aren't able to do everything that is needed in that day, figure out what's the most important thing for your kiddo and prioritize that first. If your kiddo is really struggling in reading, then maybe focus on reading. But I'll give you a different scenario. If, for example, your kiddo does really great at math and he or she is melting down with reading for the day, maybe it's a day where you do prioritize the strength. Get that down and don't fight that battle for the day. It's important to recognize that the district and all of the thought partners understand there needs to be flexibility as we navigate this water. And nobody is expecting a kid, kiddo to get it perfect. Nobody is expecting a parent to get it perfect. And that's kind of the beauty of this scenario where you can prioritize. Number five is disconnect. I think it's important for all of us, me included, to have time that's not related to school. And I think there's some value in really looking at, can I carve out a space in my home? It might not be possible inside the home, but is there a space that can be the downtime space? I work in an office room in my home that's, you know, it's small. And I spend all my whole day there. I have to leave that space for my downtime so that I feel like there's a separation between my workspace and my personal space. And I want everyone to think about that disconnecting and finding that time. And then finally, is the hardest thing I do, and I work on it on a daily basis, is just letting go of control. Right now, none of us can control all of the outcomes. And to the extent we can just move through these spaces and understand that we're not going to be able to have the same rigidity and have the same structure, that's an important way for us to be able to be of service and be helping other people. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Michelle Sandoval.
Thank you, Stephen. So thank you for sharing all of that. I know it is hard during this time in our world, really to be able to think about, what now is education going to look like for our students? We've been so ingrained into our in-person, face-to-face options, and now we don't have that opportunity right now. So what can we do in order to support our students, especially our students with disabilities, as we move towards remote learning in Denver Public Schools? So Denver Public Schools is committed to really putting out a variety of different digital and non-digital materials and instructional activities that meet the continuum for all learners ECE through 12th grade. The first priority that we needed to do in order to do that was to really focus on training our staff. We needed to make sure that our staff that are going to be implementing the instruction to our students really knew how to access remote learning. Did they have the materials needed to be able to provide good quality instruction to our students? We have different variety and options for our schools and our teachers to choose from that meets their needs and also would be able to enhance their children's that they're going to be working with needs. We're focusing on the whole child. So really wanting to make sure that we're also focusing not only on the academics, but really on the social emotional skills, too. A lot of our families right now are in a state of crisis, either through losing their jobs, having challenges with their housing situation, their food situation, the access to technology. We don't want to add another burden onto families during this time. We want it to be a place where they can say, I need some support. And it's the district really saying, how can we support you so that you have access so that you can help support your child? I am there, like Stephen said, to walk with you in support of your child. And so we have three different options that our teachers are focusing on in this remote learning environment. The first option is really that district provided instructional material with teacher supports. So kind of what that looks like is that the district is providing lesson plans and materials that can be delivered to students that they can access independently throughout the day. And then also teachers can go in and check in with them to see how they're doing. They have online office hours and also telephone available for students to call in, say they want to just do a FaceTime call with their teacher. Many of our teachers are doing that to help them walk through some of the lessons. So we have over 1,400 lessons as part of that already in, that have been produced. So that's, and every single week that we are going on with remote learning, and we will be for the remainder of this school year, those lessons are up there and for the teachers to access at least a week ahead of time so that they can plan for that. The second option that we have for our teachers is a kind of a hybrid instruction. So they can use this where they might need some materials from the district around the district lessons, but they also have access to some online materials. So they can use Google Classroom, some digital platforms to be able to provide direct instruction. We have a lot of ed tech partners that are working directly with the teachers to help them be able to navigate through those Google Classroom lessons. And we also have different 40 sessions that are offered for our teachers to be able to get those instructional materials. So across the district, we have probably 1,400, 1,500 teachers across the district that are using option two. Our third option is barely a fully digital instruction. Those schools are our MyTech schools or our one-to-one digital Chromebook schools where we have access to full online learning through Schoology, Google Classrooms. They have live instruction with videos. Students can actually come into that Google Classroom. They meet as a group and they'd be able to access lessons in that digital platform. Again, this, teachers can choose all three of these options based on their skillset and then also based on the needs of their families. We want families to be able to access all of these different options, too. So across the district, we have about 370 teachers that are using option number three, which are total online. So I want to focus really on why we're here tonight and really talking a little bit about our students with disabilities. How are we serving our students that have current IEPs or 504s? We are committed to providing, we have 10,000 students across the district who receive special education services. And we are working towards providing remote learning to the greatest extent possible. We want schools to be able to have the resources that they need to be able to provide the services and supports to the greatest extent possible to our students. We are really looking at how our students are engaging in that instruction, what questions they may have as part of that instruction. We know that sometimes we can't provide everything that is in an IEP in a remote learning setting. For example, if your child is getting physical therapy, where a physical therapist is going in and working directly with your child and being able to access different positions and body stability, that is very difficult to do in a remote learning environment with a direct service provider. What it could look like in a, in a remote learning environment is that, that, that physical therapist is actually working with the family and coaching them through and providing some visuals on what some of those activities and those motor activities might look like in that home setting, so that that child is still getting the support of that physical therapy instruction.
So from the questions that we got pre-meeting, for those of you who registered prior to the meeting, we really identified four major themes that were coming out of the questions that we saw. And I think what's really important is, these are just four to start with. As you guys have questions in the chat box, those questions are going to be coming to both myself, from an advocate perspective, and then to Michelle and other senior managers as they relate more to... as they relate more to DPS policies and things like that. We're going to try and collaborate on that and answer the questions both, from both perspectives, so you get that information. But there were some themes that we noticed that came out. The first is, what are contingency plans? What do they look like? How are they designed? What goes into the contingency plan? And Michelle did a great job of talking about what some of that looks like. Additionally, I think there's some additional information we'll provide that'll help you see what it is. As I mentioned before, from my perspective, the contingency plan process is really a collaborative process where parents and students themselves bring their concerns so that people understand what the concerns are regarding special education services. And we figure out what are the services we can provide in this virtual learning environment? And how are we going to meet student needs based on this particular learning environment? The second theme is around social emotional supports. I would say for myself that when I'm involved in an advocacy role, the two overwhelming areas where I'm involved are individuals with specific learning disabilities and then those individuals who have social emotional needs. There are a lot of social emotional needs. There are a lot of supports out there to address them. As Michelle pointed out, it's not going to be a situation where we can provide that one-to-one minutes. However, there are so many different things that can be done to address the social emotional needs. And part of it is that two-way conversation about how to meet the individual's needs as it relates to those social emotional issues. The third thing is looking at evaluations, IEP, 504 plans, and transition plans. People are asking, I've got an evaluation that was started. Where are we in the process? What's going to happen? We have individuals who say, my annual IEP review is coming up. We also have individuals that are saying, my child is moving from elementary to middle school, middle to high school, or maybe transitioning to the 18 to 21 category. Even are ECE transitioning to kindergarten? And so really, what does that look like? And then finally is around technology. We are still hearing a lot of families who are having questions about technology. So I know that Jessica is going to talk a little bit about technology and those particular needs. And again, as I pointed out, these are just four of the general areas that we saw as major themes. Hopefully through the chat room and then through the information that we have, we can elaborate that and be able to answer your specific questions. Given this forum, we're going to try and find major themes when we talk about those particular issues.
Alrighty, thank you, Stephen. So we're going to talk a little bit about this concept of contingency plans. Knowing that a contingency plan is our plan with you to see how we can integrate your child's IEP. We want to be able to develop a plan with your special education case manager, yourself, your child, to see how are we going to be able to implement it to the greatest extent possible during this remote learning environment? Again, like Stephen said, this is not an IEP, but it's basically to say, what are we doing during this time of remote learning in order to support growth for your child on their IEP goals? So what the contingency plan, here's part of this contingency plan is really looking at your child's current goals on their IEP. Then having discussion, will these goals be worked on during remote learning? If no, why not? Like we were talking a little bit about, if it's a goal around physical therapy, they're not able to do that in that setting, you would say no, and why not? If yes, you would say, yes, you would. And then how would those services look like? What would be the type of service that that would look like during this remote learning environment? How frequent will that service be done? Where will that service be done? And how are we going to progress monitor? We want our students to make growth during this remote learning environment. So what are we using to monitor that child's progress over this time? Then as we go down to accommodations, this is really where we want to look at, what type of assistive technology does the child need in order to access the remote learning curriculum? Do they need to have their Chromebook with read and write on there? Do they need to have a C Pen to be able to read for them? Do they need to have extra time or breaks built in because they need, due to their attention deficit hyperactivity disability, they're not able to sustain? So maybe they need to have a little visual schedule where they do have breaks built in for movement during their activities. And then what is that weekly schedule going to look like? Who's the provider? What days are they going to be doing either connecting with you via the phone? Are they going to be connecting with the child via the phone? Are they going to be meeting over the Chromebook in Google Meets or Google Classroom? So that you have a schedule of when those services are going to take place. This is done in consultation with you as a parent and also with the school. What is reasonable for us to be able to implement during this time? And then what isn't reasonable and why isn't it reasonable?
So I was just going to add a little bit, some of the things that I'm seeing to be able to help the families of kids with disabilities. Keep in mind that the contingency plan is really designed around special education services for a particular child. And a lot of schools have designed schedules, sort of a master schedule for the day. And so I've had a couple of parents recently say to me, I don't understand what my student's, my child's day looks like. They look at the contingency plan and they see that there are minutes on it, as Michelle pointed out, when there might be a service provider, but they don't understand the overall structure of the day. A lot of schools have morning check-in. A lot of schools are having time that all students are receiving some types of services. And so you want to make sure that you work with your case manager at the school. Or if you're working with an advocate, let us know that you have questions about it. But so that you understand what that full day looks like. Because the contingency plan is really looking at those services through the IEP. But for our children that might be mild moderate, there's a lot of time that's not going to be addressed through that contingency plan. The second thing is, I highly encourage parents to have a check-in with their caseworker. A lot of parents are saying, well, they only have 20 minutes of work, but in reality, there's probably more programming that's being required or being asked for by the student. It's this two-way process, absolutely, where the school should be letting parents know how everything's going. And I highly encourage parents to make sure you ask, hey, my kiddo only did 20 minutes of work today and they said that's all they had to do. Is that all that was needed to be done today? It might not be a daily occurrence. You might want to do it once a week, once every couple of days. But make sure that two-way conversation happens so that you're sure that what's being done is, or what's being provided is actually being done by the student. And I'm finding that a lot of parents, when they get that check-in, they have a much better understanding of what their child's day looks like.
Exactly, and that's a good point, Stephen. Thinking about students with special education needs are general education students first. So they are also going to have services and supports from the general education teacher. So how are we, are we working with the general ed teacher along with the special education case manager?
And I think that's a really, that is a really good point. And then like I said, the third thing is, so when you see on here the weekly service schedule, those minutes are in the weekly schedule and make sure you understand that. I've had great conversations with caseworkers and teams where a parent says, I really do need some additional support. I know there's an office hour. Can I get 20 minutes for my child twice a week? And the teams have been so accommodating to make that happen. And I love the contingency plans, the way they're laid out. Personally, as an advocate, and I'll let DPS speak to this, I look at the weekly service schedule first because that really helps me see kind of the touchpoints for our kids with disabilities and when they're getting those services. So with that, we're going to turn to supporting students' mental health. And so as I mentioned before, there are a lot of different ways that you can look at supporting students' mental health. I'll give you an example. I worked with a team this morning where the student is in a center-based program and they have a morning check-in that is about a 30-minute block period of time. And the teachers check in to see how the kids are doing, what they've been doing for the previous day. They have a theme and they work on a social emotional skill. A lot of parents are saying to me, I don't see service minutes from a mental health provider. That might be one area where you see that service being provided. While it seems like it's just a check-in, honestly, check-ins in developing themes and talking about emotions, those are some of those social emotional minutes that you might be seeing through a contingency plan in this virtual learning environment. You are also going to see that kids do have specific touchpoints with their service providers, which are one-on-one interactions. It's where a social worker, a psychologist, depending on who that mental health service provider is, they are actually providing that direct contact on a one-on-one basis for particular students. The other thing I do want to mention is, at the bottom, as I pointed out, office hours. It's hard for providers and this is not an ideal situation. It's hard for the providers to be able to see when a student is necessarily struggling. When they have that virtual time, you saw that there's three different learning environments that DPS is using right now. In it, in the first learning environment, it might be difficult for a provider to have that understanding of what is needed in that moment. And in those times, I recommend that you reach out to your building leaders, your caseworkers. If you have an advocacy organization like Advocacy Denver, or if you're outside of Denver, another one, reach out to them and say, I am really struggling. My kiddo is not sitting in front of the computer for more than five minutes. I don't know what to do. This goes back to that idea that I mentioned earlier, which is asking for that help and being able to say, I am struggling with those mental health service minutes. Anything you wanted to add there on the mental health piece, Michelle?
I just wanted to add, during this time, it is very stressful. It's stressful for our students, not knowing what to expect. It's stressful for our families, trying to juggle everything between being parent and teacher at the same time. And know that the office hours of our mental health providers are there to help problem solve with you. They're there to really be a sounding board and someone who could, actually, if you need additional resources, can connect you to any outside mental health resources too, that may be able to help provide those supports. Knowing that this is a trying time for all of us, it's okay to give ourselves permission to cut ourselves some slack. This is a trying time and knowing that it is also trying for our children and to know that if we do have to deviate from the schedule to say, you know, I need to give them a break today because they're really having a meltdown, it's okay to say, okay, we're going to come back to this at a later time. Or maybe connect with the school psychologist or the social worker that's working with your child to say, you know, they're struggling during this time. Can you give me maybe some different ways that I can help them work through this process? Or can you connect with them during this time and help them work this through this process? But just know that we are all in this together. We're all here to support you in the best interest of your mental health and our students' mental health.
I did get a question, that's a general question that I did want to be able to touch on because it relates to this, from an advocacy lens, which is that parents have some concerns around anxiety. And given the COVID-19 situation, there's an increased sense of anxiety, which is completely understandable. I think everybody is experiencing anxiety. And if you have a child that is already a child that has anxiety as an issue that's being worked on, there's a couple of things I would recommend. The first is, as Michelle just pointed out, and I pointed out earlier, seeing if there's ways to prioritize the work and letting the team know that the student is overwhelmed. So in other words, I had a situation where a family member of a student had contracted COVID. And so we let the team know that information. The second thing is, keep in mind the contingency plans are just contingency plans. If you need to call a meeting for the team to really look at, is the contingency plan meeting my child's needs based on these circumstances? You absolutely need to reach out to your school leaders or your advocate or somebody you're working with to say, it is not working. My child's anxiety is increasing substantially. What we originally contemplated in the contingency plan is not working. And then the third thing I would say is, there is nothing about this environment that means that parents can't ask a team to convene an IEP meeting if you need to go that extent. I would say, please start with reaching out to the school and letting them know, prioritizing, looking at contingency plans, maybe looking at some community services. I know Advocacy Denver has community partners. But as a last resort, there's nothing about an IEP that says, because we are in this environment, a team can't convene a meeting. I know we're going to talk about that. Is there anything you would add to that, Michelle?
No, I think you said it really well, Stephen. Thank you, and that leads into the next piece. So going on from what Stephen had said, there is no, I mean, of course, if things aren't working on those contingency plan, yes, reach out to your school's case manager for your child and say, we need to get back together as a team and talk about what isn't working and what we can do to help support the child. We are still working on having evaluations, annual reviews, 504 meetings, transition plans during this remote learning environment. Those remain unchanged. And so we need to be thinking about, if there is evaluations that need to be done for your child, we need to think a little bit about outside the box. Do we have any evaluations that we can do remotely? Does it really require in-person assessments? What kind of data do we already have from how they're doing in the classroom for the months that they've already been in school? What do we know already are their strengths that they have? What do we know that are some of the things that they're working towards that can still continue that evaluation and make those determinations as an IEP team? Would they still be eligible for special education supports and services? And can we develop IEP goals and services based on what we know about that student without being in person right now? Again, those evaluations and those IEPs, the school's case manager for your child will be reaching out to you to discuss what that's going to look like. If there is an evaluation that really requires an in-person assessment, that school team will be working with you to say, you know, that needs to maybe be delayed until we're back to in-person learning because that information is crucial in order to make determinations for that child's eligibility and services. And then Jess, you want to go over technology?
Yeah, thank you. So as Stephen stated before, we're seeing technology come up a lot. It's one of the major themes and a lot of the major questions that we're receiving. And so we just want to touch on some of these points and facts and then have some resources as well. So just some facts, 2,000 Chromebooks and 300 hotspots were actually distributed yesterday afternoon as well as this morning. And that is in addition to the 40,000 Chromebooks and the 500 hotspots that have already been distributed. So that's just to give a glimpse that we are still receiving Chromebooks and hotspots. Yesterday and today was the last distribution of the last round that we have received, but there will be more. At this time, we have ordered more. We're expecting several thousand more Chromebooks and hotspots, but we do not know at this time when they will arrive. But there will be updated communication regarding the distributions as they come in. So we'll continue updating. We'll continue sending out that communication. As of today, the latest distribution was yesterday and this afternoon. We are as well trying to disperse the locations to make sure that we are distributing the hotspots and Chromebooks at all different locations and different regions. So for example, you know, today we had the distribution at the EV Dennis Campus, Lincoln, Manuel, and DCIS Baker. So we are spreading those out. If you're not receiving communication and you're having questions about the tech distribution times or locations, you can always reach out to the Family and Community Engagement Helpline. Our number is 720-423-3054. And I'll repeat that again at the end. But we are receiving that updated communication and happy to answer any questions as they come in and get that information over to parents, families, students, anyone who is asking. If you have questions regarding things such as Google Classroom, broken devices, hotspots, please reach out to the DPS.studenttech please reach out to the DPS dot student tech line. Their number is listed there, 720-423-3163, 3163. Both of our helplines, the Family and Community Engagement Helpline and the dot student line, do offer bilingual services in Spanish and can utilize interpretation services to support communication in any other languages. So please share and spread that word. The third resource that is not listed on there is your schools. So please also talk to your building leader, talk to your teachers if there's technology issues or questions. If they're not able to answer it, then come to us. But your schools are a great resource to have as well.
So at this point, I did have my one question that came in. I don't know if any of the, Michelle, did you receive any other questions that you wanted to answer during this Q and A period?
No, looking in the chat room, it seems like everyone has had a chance to have a response to their questions. So I don't know if we want to just kind of open it up. Open it up to the chat room.
Sure. So at this point, is there anybody in the chat room that would like to ask a question? We've got about eight minutes and as Jess mentioned, we start on time and end on time. But if you do have a question, please put it in there. While those of you might be putting a question in there right now, I will comment, there was a question about whether you can opt out of services. And all I'm going to say really to that point is, I think it's important for you to talk to an advocacy organization. I think it's important for you to talk to your building leaders, to your case managers about opting out. What is most important that I hope everybody walks away with today is that contingency plans are not intended and they do not change your IEP. They don't do anything as far as your services go within your IEP. What they discuss is, how's the district going to be able to deliver those services in this environment? But you should please reach out to individuals and talk to them, whether it's an advocacy organization, the schools, about that idea of opting in and opting out. In my conversations in terms of contingency plans, I have not been in situations where families have been asked to opt out of services. And I just wanted to make sure that I did address that and say, please do reach out to an advocacy organization, to somebody in the district, to a case manager, if you have those specific questions.
Yes, we really want remote learning services to continue for our students with disabilities. That contingency plan is an integral piece to that. And really, if you have concerns regarding the contingency plan, I would recommend that you reach out to your child's case manager to discuss those concerns.
Well, with that then, I wanted to give Jessica an opportunity just to maybe talk a little bit about what you do and how you can be a resource.
Yeah, thank you. So I know I've stated our number a couple of times, but I do just want to make sure that everyone is aware that we are here as a resource. We're part of the Family and Community Engagement Team, but we are always answering the Family and Community Helpline between the hours of 7:30 a.m. until 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. There will always be someone answering that phone during those times. And it's for any general DPS questions, concerns, information gathering that you're wanting to do. We will make sure that we, if we don't have the answer, that we'll find the answer for you and do what we can to really support families during this time. We also have an email address, so you can also email the face helpline at dpsk12.org and we will respond via email as well. So whatever is easiest for you, we will respond. So please always use us as a resource. We are here and happy to support however we can.
Thank you, Jess. And then I have the pleasure of working at Advocacy Denver, where I get to work with families of children with special needs. And it is an honor to be able to work with all of the families that I get to work with on a daily basis. I'm proud to say that we are able to walk with a lot of families. And over my year, I've had the opportunity to help a lot of families out. You'll see that there are some virtual drop-in hours available that you can take those links down. We have advocates that can help you with that. We also have a referral line. You can call the telephone number. If you need the referral line link, you can email either myself or Pam or give us a call and we can send you to that website. But we are here, we are working with families in the Denver Public School System. That's the network that we support. If we cannot provide services because you're outside of the DPS network or for other reasons, we will happily provide you some of those community partners. I want to personally say, it's been a pleasure to be able to collaborate on this webinar tonight. I appreciate everybody who showed up tonight to be a part of it. We will make sure that this is available as well afterwards. Give us a little bit of time to work on technology. But it looks like it is 7:56 and we are going to end on time. So I appreciate everybody's.